Yeah, he's on his way here.
All right, let's see, Cody Miles is right there. I have Cody Miles, I have Jocelyn, I got Justin Cowver.
When is that thing?
Justin, can you hear us?
I can hear you well, Bill.
Okay, good. Let me turn it up a little bit though, so I can't hardly hear Zach.
Are you sure you don't want me to talk louder?
No, no, no.
You're good, you're good, Justin.
Talk lower.
All right, I think we're good here. I don't know if I have Brian Rabel, he should be coming in. Let me see. I mean. Okay, Brian, I think this might be you right here. This. Brian Rabel, can you hear us? Brian Rabel. Justin, you said you can't hear us, right? Or Cody?
I can hear you fine, Bill.
Yeah, I can hear you fine as well.
Okay, I think I got, I think I got. No cliffs out of the country. All right, you ready? So I got my one and a half minutes, we're good. All right, good evening. I'm going to call the Senator City Council meeting order for June tenth, twenty twenty five. Everyone in attendance, please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone, please remain standing and Josie, would you lead us in prayer?
Absolutely. Heavenly Father, to be a servant, Lord Jesus, to the citizens of this city. Um, we ask for wisdom, discernment, and understanding as we make decisions. And Heavenly Father, we ask for a special blessing over our employees that go above and beyond every day to take care of our citizens. And thank you for the citizens that live here and for the citizens that are coming. I also ask for a special blanket of protection over this city that is a blessed city and is high and lifted up to give you honor and glory in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, sir.
Thompson is absent this evening. Justin Cowver is.
I am right here, Todd.
Wendy Hinson.
Yes.
Nancy Reed.
Here.
Joshua Hagan and Cody Miles.
He called there. Okay, he, he entered. Then Brian Rabel is on, on a telephone. So, all right. Hey, uh, Clinton Carroll, is that the B S and A person? Okay. I'll make sure I got that person. All right, great. So first on the agenda is approval of the city council meeting minutes from May thirteenth, twenty twenty five. They've been in your Dropbox there for a little bit. Have been no changes, some likely motion to adopt those, sorry.
Make a motion?
We have a motion, we have second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, next is acknowledge receipt of the Water and Sewer Commission meeting minutes from April fifteenth, twenty twenty five. And the Planning Commission meeting minutes from May sixth. Some like making motion to acknowledge receipt of those. Make a motion. Okay, we have a motion, we have second?
I'll second. Go ahead, Josie, you can have it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, next is the financial report. And currently, we are forty one point seven percent through the quarter. Is that right?
Yes.
I'm looking at Janet, it's not right, but okay, who we are. And, uh, so far revenue is fifty three point three percent and expenditures about forty three percent. This, this month is some kind of hot, some of the highlights, we did receive our property tax, uh, which is about one point two million dollars. So that, that accounts for it, but also just a couple heads up, uh, our city sales tax seems to be, you know, tracking where we, where we are. But county sales tax this month actually seemed to be a little lower than normal, so it was about sixty thousand dollars lower than what it usually is. And then most of the budgets are in, in good shape. And then on the street fund, let me try to get down to what happened.
Yeah.
I need to, how to paint you down, right? Sorry. Thank you. Almost. Okay, so here's the street fund, seventy four percent revenue, which is good, turnbacks coming in real good, plus we got a FEMA reimbursement in there too, so that, that helped a little bit. And, uh, right now they're only at thirty four percent expenditures, but don't let that scare you. Uh, they're getting ready to do a major overhaul and, uh, on maybe building up, up there. And, uh, that's gonna take, uh, quite a bit of that, so it's coming, plus we got several road projects and it works, we just haven't been invoiced for yet, so. There we are. So does anybody have any questions? If not, if somebody can make motion to acknowledge receipt of the financial.
Hey, hey, hold on one second, Bill, I was trying to unmute. Uh, do we?
Let me back that up too, hold on. Something like, go ahead, Justin, you go first and I'll restate the motion.
I was just gonna say, I know we've talked a little bit about the impact fees. Is, is Brian gonna be able to speak tonight, Rabel, like if he's on the phone, like do we have an update there? Uh, from the attorney? On the park impact fees, I know that's not like necessarily on this budgeted item, but I know it's, we're about sixty days in on, on approval, I wanted to get an update on that. Looks like Brian will affect it.
Some reason he cannot mute, but I, I don't think, yeah, so I did talk to him last week. And, uh, he told me he would get ahold of the attorney. Uh, and then he, I talked to him again yesterday after you questioned me and he told me that he would, uh, continue to try to get him, but he hasn't. Last I've heard, he has not made contact with him yet, but I will keep everybody posted.
And, and that is correct. Could you just, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, now I hear you, go ahead, Brian.
Okay, I've, I've had problems with trying to figure out the mute, uh, button or whatever, but yeah, I've reached out to, um, oh, um, I, I can't think of his name now all of a sudden. Um.
Justin.
Um, yeah, Justin Eichman, and, and he apparently is just swamped at the moment, has not been able to get back to me. He had spoken with me, uh, quite some time ago, and, and he felt that the vast majority of stuff looked good with regards to it. He did, uh, have a couple suggestions. Uh, and he indicated that he was going to, uh, follow up with, uh, the city, uh, with an email, uh, which he has not done. So I reached out to him last week, uh, and requested that, but I have not heard back from him at all, but I will, uh, I'll continue to, to, to bug him a little bit, but I don't want to bug him too much.
All right, so with that, would someone like make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, financial report for May and also the court report?
Yeah, so a second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so I also want to acknowledge our state rep, Nick Burks has joined us this evening in the attendance, so thanks for coming, Nick. Appreciate it. Uh, all right, so next is department reports, they're all in there, does anybody got any questions on any of those? Here are none, next is public comment. So if anybody'd like to, uh, come up and make public comment, address the council, something today or in the future, uh, please feel free to. If you do come up, please give us your name, address, uh, and then you have three minutes. And Todd will run the timer.
Uh, we'll start the timer when you give your name, we know who you are, but he needs, I've just got a couple of questions. First meeting thirteen twenty five, Lord Van Street. Um, can you give us a little more, uh, granularity on the two street projects or a couple of street projects? And the building that you're referring to, the costs and what's involved and what's going on in, on Allen Street?
Yeah, all right, so I'll answer all those. So Allen Road, what happened, uh, we're having to dig it up, there, there's, and Josh might add to this, but apparently we got, uh, you know, some bad base down there and the road was starting to fail. So we gotta dig it all up. Uh, and then, uh, brand, you know, different type of base down there and then repave it. Uh, you know, they discovered it, they started, they got about half of it done. They didn't want to leave the equipment here because they had to mobilize that equipment everywhere. If you leave those asphalt crews here, they start charging by the day, so. They started, then they're gonna come back and, you know, finish up the other half, but it, it's in progress. I believe the north end of it might be closed now. Uh, you know, we just closed it loud for local traffic, there's a couple people that live down there. But, uh, we basically, you know, closed it because of the, you know, potholes and the crews have been working on it, I've seen them out there, so. They're, they're working on it, probably about a, from start to finish, we're estimating about sixty days. I mean, I know it only takes a few days to get in there after the asphalt crew comes, but you gotta do all this prep work first. And then you gotta mobilize the crew. You know, you just can't call up the crew and say, hey, uh, asphalt company, I need you here tomorrow. They don't, they, they work on schedules and they have to mobilize a lot of equipment, so that takes care of that. Another road project we're working on is, uh, Elsie Hickman Road. We're having to do same thing there, we're gonna be taking up all that road later in the summer, not today. But, uh, later in the summer, right now everybody's tied up with, you know, long and, and other, other issues, so they're gonna take all that up. But I'll do base down there, they use some kind of a crushed concrete in the past, it didn't work now good. And it's, it's causing issues, so we're gonna take it all, put the correct base down on it, SB two or SB three or so, something, uh, similar to that, plus fix all the drainage, uh, when they do that too. So that's those two, uh, the building is probably, I think we're estimating eight, nine hundred thousand dollars to, to expand it. It's gonna be expanded. One or two meetings ago, we approved a contract with an architect firm to do that. And it hasn't been out for bid yet, they're still drawing it up. And, uh.
That's for the Anthony's?
Yeah, that's for the Public Works Building, yeah, they're, they're growing out there. So. Did I get them all?
Yeah, you didn't give any estimate on what the street work was running.
So, so the Allen Road, I don't have a cost on, I mean, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, I, I'd say three, four hundred thousand dollars time we repave all that. Probably the same with that, Elsie Hickman, the time we put a lot of material in there. I just giving you a good guess. Anthony will probably be here next month, he's, he's ill, so he could probably give you a better number than that, but yeah, they're not cheap. Yeah, but none of it's cheap.
Things can be worse.
Well, we want the road right, I mean, because it is failing, there's potholes and things and, you know, and I, anyway, that's, that's where that road's at. Can I answer any questions? I do get it? I get it? All right, I'll make sure I didn't miss nothing. Anyone else? Name, address, and.
I got three minutes, correct?
Three minutes, sir.
Uh, my name is Kenny Wong Many, I live in, uh, Florentine, uh, Diamond Estate, I represent the Diamond Estate POA. I'm here today to represent the team because a lot of question been asked about street sign. I think we addressed that last June. We're still having same problems. Uh, we're looking at about two hundred rooms being built. Uh, since the city of Centerton is evolving, a lot of people love moving to Centerton, including myself. Schools is being built, is right there for kids. However, we don't have street signs. Reason why I'm here today, we got calling again, people hitting, uh, post box, jumping on curb and everything. You did something great, have the, uh, city police out there, put the speed limit sign during May, it helped out, but it's not gonna help solve this issue. People are walking in the evening, don't feel safe because cars are going at fifty, sixty miles an hour on Wolverine. You went down there, you say, that's a sign down there, there's only one sign right now. Somebody took up the other sign on Cut Bro. Having said that right now today, we have about what, twelve streets in Diamond Estates. Public Roads, two signs. Speed limit is twenty, nobody obeys, nobody follows that. How can we improve that? Now, maybe I'm thinking a solution on Wolverine example, twenty miles an hour is maybe too slow. Maybe you wanna push it up to thirty, so people can respect. It seems it's not gonna happen. So we generate about what, a million dollar in property tax? In Diamond Estate, about two hundred homes, five thousand per homes. I think each street about twenty eight homes, about a hundred and forty thousand. I think it's not a lot to ask the city to put two signs on each street.
Hey, I, I appreciate that, I mean, isn't there a POA, HOA in there?
This is public city, public, public roads, it's a green sign, not blue signs.
So I'll, I'll respond, you know, because I was involved with this and Anthony, if he was here, he would have responded for you. But, uh, you know, in the entrance of every subdivision, we got a speed limit sign, and the same thing with yours, you turn onto Wolverine Drive, you turn on Hope Street, there it is right there.
That's two.
That's all, yeah, we put them on the entrance of everything. And most of them probably have a children play sign there too, I think that's pretty standard. Uh, if it's a very long stretch, sometimes they put a couple extra signs. Uh, but then on the signs that you're talking about, on the individual streets, actually I believe that Maple Estates, when they built that, I think C three put all those signs in, and I think.
They, we're going back again, we need to move forward. Families, they don't feel safe, we have to purchase more plastic sign, they blink on street. I want us to be happy both side. We generate good revenue there, a lot of people moving in. Homes sits on the market maybe three to seven days, they get still for about five fifties, six hundred thousand.
Hey, I don't disagree with that, Bill, I mean, let's take, maybe we should take this one offline, but is, is there an opportunity? I mean, I personally am not a huge fan of this, but I think just because you put a sign up there doesn't mean it's gonna work. Is there any thoughts or other solutions in the neighborhood in their meetings of what they may be looking at? Possibly speed constraints, things like that as far as slowing it down, I mean. So I don't know, I think we should have a meeting about this, and I don't disagree with the, with the amount of traffic that's going over there with the new park and the community center and, uh, things like that, but I don't know the, the signs, Bill, thanks for answering that, that helped clear it up for me.
I mean, I have, having the speed trap really helped out the morning, people slowed down. I commend this, uh, what I call Police Department is amazing, having two or three offices, I appreciate that, but during the other time during the day, man, people are flying.
You're referring to like during school, like?
School, off days, weekends, a lot of people love to walk because it's a great neighborhood. And it's just.
What, what time of day are you saying that this is happening?
Majority of the morning between seven and nine, and then again between three and five, or seven sometime, and then during football games.
Like when people are coming home or returning to work?
No, are you talking about more just on Wolverine, or are you talking about in the sub?
Same thing now, in our division, same thing. On Blue Moon, last January, somebody struck two mailboxes. A month ago, somebody went on the curb on Tiffany. I get all this information, but they say, who do we call? I say, then we talked about POA, but I'm gonna just try to minimize the situation, I think having signs, when we have signs, we have a crime, or we have a crime, we have a fine, we can do that. Nowadays, we can't do anything, they say, oh, I don't care, I take a picture, you post it, it's not helping.
And my, this is just a question, I'm fairly new, so forgive me, but with the new parking lot that's went in on the, on the west side of the stadium. Um, Cody Harper, if you could even comment, if you know anything about, you know, has there been an increase in, um, violations? Do we have a way of like measuring that to see if there's, um, more violations there? Do we put up one of those, I, I've seen them a bit, where we see how fast you're going kind of thing, and it. Do we have, I mean, have we done that in that area, I guess is my.
We put these on on Wolverine, I couldn't tell you how many times now.
Yeah.
Um, it's been up there quite a bit. As far as, I, I couldn't tell you if there's been an increase in violations because of the parking lot. Could, I could look back over historical and just see if there's been, but as far as, well, I can't say that there has been.
I know, obviously that would increase traffic to that area versus when it wasn't there, I guess it's.
Yeah, I mean, but you're also talking, I mean, that parking lot's not.
Huge.
Yeah, it's not massive, so. Do you have people, because I do this, when I drop my son off in Campbell, I don't wanna make a left, so I go right. And I go, whatever that street is.
Which one Meadow, you have three signs on some Meadow Drive.
You know, take me bow, bow, down Wolverine, so there, I would be willing to bet there's people going too fast there. I mean, I would be open investigating, putting like speed humps on Wolverine. I think, uh, if we talk about in the subdivision, I'd like to hear Josh share a second too. I mean, I, I've driven down, my wife and I just, just go out driving and we'll go down Diamond Estates. And the roads aren't that long, so someone is choosing to speed, I, I mean, they're, they're, they're really choosing to, because it's just not that long. But I think down Wolverine, because being right there with the school, I, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to investigating doing something like that.
Now, now, I will tell you, we've talked about speed, you know, bumps several times. And the issue is with emergency vehicles, snowplows, they tear it up.
Yes.
They, 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 you know, our departments do not want those.
There's also been arguments as far as.
You want them on every street.
Like I said, I commend the PD, PD is doing an amazing job. I don't give a, we stop people in the morning, I see that. I'm also an officer, I mean, like I see that every morning, but again, I respect, they, they can't do that every day, because these are the normal people are doing the same, they're crammed every day.
So a speed hump, not a bump. Would.
I know, because of snowplows, our emergency responders, I mean, if you had, ambulance come to your house, it's gonna slow the ambulance down and things.
I don't think having two extra signs on the street's gonna cause somebody who's speeding down Diamond Estates to, to not speed. I, I think there's a, there's a, a character issue there with our snoot speeding. It's, it's, it's.
I agree.
Human condition, unfortunately, I mean, that's part of the human condition as far as, uh, when it comes to speeding, I mean, it happens all over the city.
And it's close to a high school.
That's the one thing I don't understand, and coming to the homes, coming from Wolverine, entering Diamond, there's no sign, so people just speed, they don't even slow down to, they just.
It's just, yeah, this is part of the human condition.
Oh, the sad thing is, I, when I first took office, I sent them down to Quail Ridge. Now here, POA president called me, said, Bill, we got speeders. Who's the first guy they stopped? P O A president. No, no, and, and, and the officers tell me this, now.
Caught speeding.
Here, 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 where I'm going with this, though. So, I mean, I, I, I talked to everyone, we send these extra patrols in there. Ninety percent of the time it's the people that live in their own subdivision doing the speeding, it's not, it's not the school kids or something, it's the people that live there. And I don't know if you have some way to blast out to your commute, you know, you're, hey guys, slow down, something.
We've been posting pictures on Facebook and everything. Like I said, the PD is doing an amazing job, but.
Been asking for extra patrol, they've been over there.
I was gonna ask that.
Yeah, they do it.
I don't wanna take an officer away, but just a small, minor thing, having sign, hey, we can say, slow down, you know, now you, you can't even say anything. That's my, that's my side.
Definitely a valid concern, so.
And people love the whole Diamond and Silver persons.
One, thank you, one, one question on that, Bill, last thing, is it, is it definitely apparent more during the school year than versus the summer, or is it pretty much all, all the time?
Pretty much all the time.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. That's, that's a citywide, I mean, when school's in, you have, you have more speeding throughout the entire city.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Josh, you didn't have any, anything ready to add?
Uh, you got it pretty much there, so.
All right, thank you. Moving on, anything, anyone else? You're ahead your time, Chris, you're ahead your time. Chris, you're ahead your time.
You guys start.
Anybody else? All right, Nick, you want to say anything to us while you're here? You don't have to. Uh, thank, all right, thanks for coming. All right, so now we'll get into ordinances and resolutions. Uh, so what we'll do before we, we start, would someone like to make a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only? And suspend a rule requiring to read on three separate occasions, uh, all ordinances.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, sir.
Justin Cowver.
Yeah, sorry, I was unmuted, sorry, yes.
Wendy Hinson.
Yes.
Jesse Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right, so our first ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty five, this is a continuation of last month. Uh, this is the, uh, no soliciting ordinance. Uh, well, we made a couple changes to it as, as recommended by the council. Well, we've made the times. You can put that here. Oh, yeah, right there, right in front of me. It, it, we changed the time from nine AM to sunset. And we put how we got to sunset, you know, determined or forecasted by the National Weather Service, there's a link to a website there. Uh, so we have that. Uh, also, on no soliciting signs, uh, it was suggested to get city signs. I, I made it where we did both, because we got a lot of folks already out there that have no soliciting signs. But they can have, if we wanna provide signs, I got pricing for them, plus some examples. Uh, we can provide them in addition what they have, or they, they can use either one, i- it's fine. I think more the, the city sign with the official logo on there, probably more of a deterrent. But, uh, anyway, uh, like I said, we got nine thousand houses here, and probably eight, there's five or six thousand that have no soliciting signs. But we wanted to, you know, at least give that option to, to folks, uh, to have either one. Also, uh, the permit fee to help pay for these, but also just to, you know, kind of get more in line to where we're at. Uh, we moved the, or the permit, uh, annual fee has been moved up from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars. And then for each additional license or, or permit, it's ten additional dollars. This, this thing still stays the same, it's issued for six months and then they can, you know, they can come back and renew it free of charges. We didn't want to change that, but we wanted to increase it just a little bit, just to kind of, you know, cover everything. So, uh, as far as no soliciting stickers went. Uh, here's some examples that was made by, by a local company here, Braviss. Uh, you see on the bottom there where it says printed in conjunction with Braviss Marketing Agency, that's just a placeholder. We could put anything we want there, we could put on there, provided by the city of Centerton or, or whatever we like, we can change the wording on this, he just, you know, just threw some ideas out for us to, to kind of discuss. Uh, pricing wise, uh, I know it suggested maybe we, we charge for these. Uh, they're very inexpensive, if we want to do we want to do three thousand of them, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars. If we want to do five thousand, it's eleven hundred dollars. If we want to do ten thousand, it was right out, two thousand dollars. Which is probably about the best budget, it'll probably last us forever. These stickers, what we could do is to have them all city hall, I mean, we could have them here to public pickup for free, because it's only like about twenty or twenty five cents a piece for these things. And it'd be a bookkeeping nightmare for them to receive twenty, you know, no, really, seriously, it would be, and, and all these good folks pay taxes here, so. You know, I, 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 I didn't see a big investment in this, you'll probably help cover this cost anyway. Uh, so that's, that's basically what we have, so if we want to move forward, if we want to use these decals, great. Uh, I kinda like what they, what they proposed. Maybe just change that bottom thing to say provided by the city of Centerton. You know, or, or something just similar to that, but again, that's just a placeholder, so.
So these are truly stickers?
Yeah, they're vinyl stickers.
Okay.
And they're, and they're three by three, they're vinyl decals.
Was there any, uh, I just wanted to go back a little bit on the, the constitutional first.
Yeah, so Brian, Brian reviewed it, and, and he's good with what we, what we did here. He, he was, yeah, see, I could just all mess up. Yeah, he, he was fine with this. Uh, actually, he.
Yeah, Bill, on that, I, I wanna make it clear, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, there is no set time that's been set by the, by the Supreme Court or whatnot, so I mean, it's, uh, you know, it's not to say that we can't get sued with this, but this is certainly, uh, expands the time more so than we had before. One of the things I would like you guys to do for purposes of the minutes would be to discuss a little bit some of our concerns that we have and one of the re, as why we are restricting the time during, you know, uh, after sunset up until, you know, the, the morning time, so. You know, I, I suspect that you guys have concerns with regards to crime and safety and peace and whatnot, but I, I think it's important that we get some of that in the minutes, uh, just so that we can, uh, back on that in case that there is any litigation that ensues.
Yeah, so, you know, based on looking at the other cities ordinances and then also the discussion we had, uh, you know, a, a lot of them were still ten AM, some were nine AM. So, uh, I think we all settle on nine AM to, to sunset, because after dark, we don't want people knocking on the folks' doors and everything, and and this will change more in the summer and the wintertime too, because it'll get dark, I mean, darker sooner. So, uh, and a lot of the issues we have, i- it's not the no, you know, it is the no soliciting size more we have with the hours. You know, that's, that's one thing, uh, you know, and the police have been doing a good job, I mean, if the folks will call the police, you know, when they come, if they have no soliciting sign, we have a, a formal report. Because I mean, I read a Facebook post the other day, okay, there's a solicitor here, but he called the police, I mean, I had to have some documentation to go with it.
I guess they don't, the latest emergency, so they don't want to bother them.
Yeah, but, and, and I'll, I'll also, after we change this, I'll put this information out and, you know, insisted folks, you know, oh, they're not bothering, they, you know, and, and, you know, because I need to, if we're gonna have to revoke this at some point, I want to make sure we have some documentation to back this up, we just don't want to revoke it.
We could on that sticker, instead of putting provided by city of Centerton, we could put the police department's telephone number.
There you go, yeah, we could do that too, that, that's not a bad idea.
We want to add the, the.
The bond emergency number.
Yeah, okay.
Want to add the times on there too, or not?
I don't know if you have enough room.
I think. I, I, I think just leaving it as simple or basic as can be, because if you get too detailed, if something changes, we gotta change it.
That's true.
And we're gonna give them a sheet when they come in here, which we do now.
And they have to sign it, is that clear?
We don't make, we don't make them sign it, we just, I mean, we just say, okay, here's the rules, and, you know, Nicole or Crystal, whoever's in the front office, you know, gives it right to them. It's all printed out, there, there they are, so. You want to just put, uh, violations, violators people reported to the center of police like that, maybe just leave it like that?
I mean, I think if we have the telephone, because for me personally, if I had that on my house.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna call the police, I wouldn't know the telephone number to call.
And that seems to be.
If I got it on the signs.
So if I just put center of police number, or should I put violators were reported?
I think that's violators reported to, and then put police department's number.
Okay, no, I, I just want to make sure I get the wording right.
Oh, I don't.
Yeah, that, that sounds close enough, and I'll, I'll get with Braviss to get that done.
So. I like the word prosecuted.
You what?
I like the word, or the phrase, violators will be prosecuted.
Yep, you can do that.
Good with that.
Little notice.
Hey, hey, Bill, I don't know if this is any, any of you experienced, but when we've had door to door sales recently, again, to Josh's point, I don't want to get too granular, but a lot of the security guys that are. granular, but a lot of the security guys that are coming through neighborhoods right now are really specific on saying so and so's address over here is buying it, we're coming to service him on this date, or you interested? Like, is is there something where we need to put in there, like, how many, you know? If if you're found without a fence, like, to prosecute it, yes, but is there something we need to put on there if they've done it more than once? You know, there's a a larger fine, or is it just, is it just the same thing each offense?
No, it's a minimum of twenty five and and, uh, up to two hundred and fifty dollars. That's up to the judge. And then it says that each such violation be continue each day's violation will be a separate offense.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Then I also stuck a deal added here, so we don't ban these guys forever, because I think this was an issue that, uh, Brian we came up with, too, is I did put if, you know, if the permits revoked or shall, you know, if revoked, uh, be for a period of sixty days. So this the solicitor can come back in sixty days and reapply for another permit. And whether they can maybe get their acts together and. So.
I think one of the other things that we need to cover tonight, and this is what Brian had just, uh, brought up, is and he and he mentioned this in the last meeting where he said that we that the policy needs to be narrowly tailored, which we've done, uh, and then supported by our by articulable facts. So why are we doing this? We need to make sure that we discuss tonight in the meeting why. Why why don't we want solicitors after sunset?
Hey, Brian?
Yes.
Did did we? I I feel like we discussed that pretty in detail last meeting. We can rehash it some.
I think he wants it in the minutes first.
Even if it's in the minutes for the last one, it wouldn't matter. I I mean, I think safety, but I think, look at somebody coming in after dark. Uh, what if the front not working? You know, you got no way of knowing who it is. We don't know, I mean, people are in their house. I think the other part is the just the fact of right to privacy after dark.
Right, I agree.
Like the round. Well, I did talk to a couple of a few, uh, residents asking what their feedback was, John. Certainly gave his feedback at the last meeting. And I think it's appropriate when we have residents concerned about safety. We've got seniors in the community that live alone. Um, you have people coming in all hours of night. We have children with special needs. We have, um, also, you know, families that put their kids in about a decent hour. You've got people that work, you know, different shifts. I think it's a respect thing for the people that live here. Um, and I understand that there's, you know, opportunity for for selling, but also think that respect is a long way. And if we don't have some kind of parameter there, then it 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 shows that we don't show respect to our neighbor. And I think it's important to at least, you know, have that respect there. And and based on the comments that I received, is it was very well received as far as the sunset rule. Um, and that it's based on NOAA, so it's not specific to what Centerton says. It's a true measure of, you know, it's it's a safety issue. Um, because you've got kids whose parents may work till ten, eleven o'clock at night, and they may answer the door to anybody. Um, so, um, yeah, I I I don't, I don't personally like, I have the, you know, the sign on my door. It doesn't always get acknowledged. Um, I'll do better about calling the police department, but, um.
When you got kids that go to sleep early.
Yeah, you've got babies. I mean, there's just, there's so many different, uh, things going on that, you know, you could give reason as to why there needs to be respect for those hours. Um, so it's, you know, it's not a matter of, in my opinion, we're violating any any rights. It's more of respecting the people that live here and and making sure that we have the keep that respect held.
Brian, you think we got it?
I would love, and Chief, I hate to put you on the spot, but can you articulate anything with regards to um, uh, increase of crime over a at a certain time or or anything like that?
What was it? I didn't understand.
Asking Tony to talk about.
Oh.
Crime enforcement.
Um, as as far as articulate anything, as far as like after sunset, I cannot.
Right, because because typically we've got, you know, there there has to be ar- articulated facts with regards to this. And I think a lot of this, and and I want to make it clear, I agree with everything that has been said by council, but but a lot of it is is just opinion and whatnot. So it's it's good if we have any facts or, you know, that you can, through your expertise, can just, uh, just kind of add to it.
Yeah, this whole thing is a balancing act between the right to commerce and the right to privacy.
Correct.
Thanks, Cody. Yeah.
All right. We ready to move on? Brian, we ready to move on?
I suppose.
Okay, I was to make sure you get what you needed or what we needed. And and the only thing I I will add is, we're talking about privacy issue and seniors and stuff. You know, the main thing is, is these folks don't want these solicitors there, and they shouldn't become a period. You know, and that's.
Sign.
Yeah, and have the signs that they 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 still disobey it, because there was one group who I didn't. Anyway, there was one group that come in here and terrorized the community. I mean, and the police actually called us and said, guys, what's going on? You know, and we had like a whole bunch of reports in just a short time, so.
Uh, I think that's part of why, part of why this is all coming up is because I don't, I honestly don't mind a salesman coming to my door. I mean, I'll be honest, I I'm glad they're out working. I would like the fact that if it gets to where it's nighttime, after dark, as our government agency has put forward, that I wouldn't have to worry about that after that. Out of respect, I'm okay with them coming to my door during the day. I'm always respectful to them. And, uh, just respect that right to privacy after dark.
It also gives them with this with this, and it being provided by the city, that just goes one step above, giving them an opportunity not having to pay for it um, that they would have, you know, in place if they needed to use it, and they don't want the disturbance.
I just wanted to add one additional thing, Ally Bertory, eight eleven Harvest Street. Um, one thing we haven't talked about as well is this is also for the safety of the solicitors and the salespeople themselves. Because after dark, your rate of incidence of maybe people don't have lights on and they'll trip and injure themselves, or uh, people are more wary and anxious answering the door. It's also for their personal safety to do this as well.
All right. John, you think we got it? Did we miss it? Because you were at the last meeting, too. You think we got everything? Okay, I know you were a part of that discussion with us, so. All right. Well, Brian's not here, so I will read these by by title only. Until he's coming, I think he's on his way, but I'm not sure if he's gonna make it or not, but, uh.
I'll make it.
Huh? What'd you say, bro?
He said he'll make it.
Yeah, I I will be there shortly.
Okay, so I'll just go on then. Uh, so this is ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty five. An ordinance amended in Senator municipal code four point oh four point oh four, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty five?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Okay.
Okay, a motion is next, and roll call.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Jesse Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
And now for the emergency clause. The City Council of the City of Centerton, Arkansas, has determined emergency is hereby found to exist, and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval. Someone like to make a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
I'm live.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Jesse Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
Let me talk about these stickers real quick. Anybody have a preference on these, black, white, rounded, not rounded?
Which stands out the most.
Which one, which one you, I think the black one stands out, but I I don't know. I mean.
It does, I mean, it's gonna fade a little bit in the sun, but I think it stands out more.
Okay.
The red or the round.
The rounded one.
Black rounded one? Okay. Okay. Does anybody have a Jackson meat order in, uh, this order of ten thousand of them, just get it out of the way?
That's good.
I think let's make a motion on that, that just to just to make it all in the in the public broker. So I like make a motion to authorize, uh, the mayor to, uh, purchase ten thousand of these stickers for approximate cost of two thousand dollars.
I'll make that a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? All right, so this next ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty six. Uh, this is, uh, accepting right of way and utility easement dedications from Splash Car Wash, which uh, just opened up there, the map down there of them. That that kind of shows us what we're getting, so this is pretty standard. We do these pretty regularly, so. Any questions on these? All right. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty six, an order accepted right of way and utility easement dedications from Splash Car Wash, LLC for property described as lots four, five, six, and part of lot seven, block ten. Original town of Centerton located in section thirty three, township twenty north, range thirty one west, Benton County, Arkansas. Someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty six?
Hold on a second.
We didn't make a motion, did we?
We got any motion we're doing all by title only?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Yep, you're good.
Did I mess up?
No, you're good.
I won't get fired.
I wasn't, you're good.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion to adopt it, right? We'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty six.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Okay, we got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, sir.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
I'm gonna recuse myself on this one.
Flash? Okay.
Jesse Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
I'm just curious why you're accusing yourself?
I just, I have some concerns and questions for Brian, this. Um.
Well, I don't want to vote on if there's concerns.
Well, it's not concerned specifically to that, it's concerns about potential conflict. And I don't know how to handle that, and I don't want to vote on something that I'm unsure of, so.
Right away or easement conflict or something else?
Uh, the actual business.
Oh, the business itself? Okay.
Yes. And then Cody Miles.
Yes.
You got enough?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So next is ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty seven. This is accepting the final plat of the landing subdivision. Uh, this is forty lots and in two tracks. This is located on Greenhouse Road, south of the Creekside Subdivision on the west side of the road. Actually, it's right next door. And I have Jeff to, if we have any. Uh, this was presented to the last planning commission meeting, and the planning commission did, uh, recommend for uh, we are accepting bonds. Or. Okay, so we're accepting water sewer bonds in an amount of hundred and fifty two thousand, seven hundred and fifty five dollars, and street drainage bonds of five hundred thousand, one hundred and seventy eight.
So it looks like I've got an extra zero in there.
Yeah, it does like have an extra zero. We'll get the extra zero taken out.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions?
Or you could take it as five million.
Yeah, don't mind. I think it's five. He's good with that. So, yes, it's all right. All right, Brian, five, no, I just can't. We'll we'll take the zero, we'll we'll get that. All right, any questions?
Just a question, is there two entrances and I'm just not seeing it?
One, isn't there, Jeff? Just one.
I didn't, I guess it's a genuine question here. What about fire?
So they build a public road around lots, and then they have a few different entrances off of it, but cornflakes is a public road.
Okay, so there's multiple entrances to get, okay, that's that was.
Only one entrance on Greathouse, sorry.
Yeah.
All right. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty seven. The order is accepting the final plat of the landing subdivision, creating residential lots one through forty and tracks A and B in the City of Centerton, section two, township nineteen north, range thirty one west, Benton County, Arkansas. I think it is. So I make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty seven.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
And we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
You can have it.
Hey, you'll give it to Justin? Okay, Justin had it.
Maybe it's for.
I don't have a plat for this, but but I could tell you all about it. Not a plat there for the reserve. All right, so next one is.
Hold on, I need I need to do a roll call.
Got me.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Jesse Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan. Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right, the next is ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty eight. This is accepting the final plan of the reserve Wolverine subdivision. This is fifty eight lots and also tracks A and B. Uh, and this is located.
I was gonna ask that question.
I'm very familiar with this one is. This is off, uh, behind the Maple State subdivision, but it's actually behind, it's west of it, off of Wolverine Drive. It sits on the west side of the road, uh, correct, off of Silver Maple Drive, basically.
Directly directly behind where that road.
Well, it's west, directly west.
Yeah.
This is for, yeah, we'll leave it there, but, uh, and I do have, uh, Skip here, where if we have any questions for Skip.
I thought there would be a map or something, and I couldn't find it.
That was there, I don't know why.
Separately in the Dropbox, it should be, uh, is it Dropbox under that number?
See it. I don't have it.
I don't have it. That's I was looking for it, I was.
I was looking for it, just in the order.
See it soon.
I can I can email it to you if you all want to see it, but I got it actually on a desk over there, it's already signed in.
It's west of Maple.
West of Silver Maple, yes.
The street across Wolverine.
Isn't there a house that sits right over there, too? Or is that, am I like, I'm thinking the wrong?
The north side of the thing.
So it's on the, it's on the, on the the south side of where that house is sitting. I'm curious about.
All right, any questions? I get it, best I could. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty eight. The order is accepting the final plat of the reserve at Wolverine subdivision phase one, creating the residential lots one through fifty eight and tracks A and B in the City of Centerton, section twenty nine, township twenty north, range thirty one west, Benton County, Arkansas. Someone like to make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty eight?
I'm live.
Okay, we got a motion, we have a second?
Sorry. Sorry.
Second. Roll call.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right, these next two, next two ordinances are related. So this first ordinance is the ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty nine. This is accepting a right of way dedication. From the Rogers Equity Group, which is also called My Storage out here on the west side of there. That's basically what it is. It's about point four six, about fifty foot right of way along West Centerton Boulevard. And this sits on the south side. And the warranty deed is attached to it. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty nine. In order to accept the right of way dedication from Rogers Equity Group. Uh, LLC for property located in part of section six township nineteen north range thirty one west. City of Centerton, Benton County, Arkansas. Somebody make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty nine.
It's removed.
And we have a motion by Wendy. We have a second?
Second.
All right, Cody. All right. Gotcha. Roll call, sir.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right, our last ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirty. Accepting a utility easement from the same property. And the utility easement is attached to it. Any questions on that? Twenty twenty five dash thirty. What is accepting utility easement dedication from Rogers Equity Group for property located in part of. Section six township nineteen north range thirty one west city of Centerton, Benton County, Arkansas. Make motion to adopt toward this twenty twenty five dash thirty.
So moved.
I felt like I've been still in the show, so.
Justin, you wake up there? We need a second.
Second.
All right, we gotta say.
It's usually a lot faster than that.
Yeah.
Sorry, there is delay. All right.
I have, since I have Justin on the line, Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right, so now we'll go to resolutions. Uh, and Shannon's here. If we have any questions. So this first resolution is twenty twenty five dash twenty four. Uh, this is basically, uh, asking to change our. We all have, uh, credit cards, all departments do for, for expenses and things, or we want to change from. Our current provider, which is our best bank to JP Morgan. They've shopped around a little bit and, uh, felt like it's probably a little bit better deal. It was probably time for a change. So, uh, that's the purpose of this. We just wanted to bring agreement to you for. Shannon's here. If we have any questions.
I've already talked to her about it.
Okay. You satisfied with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right, resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty four. Resolution authorizing mayor and the city clerk as representatives of the city of Centerton, Arkansas to enter into an agreement with. JB Morgan Chase Bank for credit card services for the city of Centerton. Someone like make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty four.
Make the motion.
Motion by Justin. We have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, by Wendy. Roll call.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right, next is resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty five. Uh, this is an agreement with DMX Architects. A remodel project we want to do for the old city hall. So this is the same company that, uh, Public Works is using to remodel their building. He did provide us a agreement for a flat fee of twenty five thou- twenty five thousand dollars to, to do this work. And this is, uh, believe we just, you know, remodeling the whole front part of it. Uh, and just give you a little progress on that building. We, we're redoing the community room. Uh, there's new floors being painted this week. So that, that's almost done. The roof is being replaced this week. I've seen him over there today. So they're working on the roof. I'm gonna make too much noise over there.
I wasn't there, so.
Oh, okay. But they're replacing the roof and this is the last part of this and. You know, so we'll sit down with architect. We'd like to, you know, remodel this thing into a maybe a. A possible coffee shop inside. Then a little sharing library, maybe sitting area for the public and. So that, that's what this agreement is for. And we had to have architect plans so we can move forward. And before we put it out for bid, I will bring it back to council so you can see what we're proposing. The design, so. All right, any questions? All right, resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty five. That sounds like Ray will come in. A resolution authorized the mayor and Centerton. Uh, every start up. Resolution authorized the mayor and city clerk. Representatives of the city of Arkansas to enter into an agreement with DMX Architects Fayetteville, Arkansas for architect services for the Centerton. Community building remodel project for the city of Centerton. Someone like make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty five.
Listen to it, Tom.
If we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Cody, Cody gun.
Cody's got. I'll hit the second, okay. All right. You have what you need? Roll call when you're ready.
So. Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
He said yes, too.
That was a yes from me and my dog.
Did you get them all?
Yeah.
I heard spots. I got distracted. All right, next one is resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty six. This is granting a partial right of way to Black Hills Energy. And this is along, uh, actually Commercial Street right out here. There's a diagram that I've added. Uh, this is for the highway one oh two widen project. They do need a small easement, uh, right of way to, to move their gas lines. So that's all this is. It's granting a, granting a right, uh, the right of way. Any questions? All right, yeah, I have a map. I've got a map on both of them. All right, so. You ready to take over?
Sure, I'll take over.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty six.
Resolution twenty five, uh, two thousand twenty five dash twenty six, a resolution authorizing the grant of a right of way to Black Hills Energy, Arkansas. On a parcel of land owned by the city for the purpose of installing gas line to service this property and others.
Someone like make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty six.
We'll make the motion.
Okay, Wendy's made the motion. We got a second? Second. Roll call.
Some coffee.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
Right. Next is resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty seven. Uh, this is agreement with Walmart for reimbursement. Sienna Drive, uh, traffic signal project. And when we approved the agreement last month, I did tell you that this was coming. Uh, the order reimburses up to thirty thousand dollars, uh, of what we're putting out to. You know, make a design for some driveway improvements over here between Main Street and Sienna Drive. So. This is just a reimbursement agreement with Walmart. So, any questions on that one?
Know about that, too.
Right.
All right, resolution number two thousand twenty five dash two seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk as representatives of the city of Centerton, Arkansas. To enter into an agreement with Walmart Incorporated for reimbursements for the Sienna Drive and Highway one oh two traffic signal project.
Someone like make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty seven.
So moved.
You have a motion? We have a second?
Yeah.
Sorry. It was Justin.
Justin, I think?
Yes.
Justin, second.
Justin, second. Okay, roll call, sir.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Justin, or Joshua Hagan, excuse me.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right, next is resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty eight. An agreement with BSNA Software for, uh, software, uh, for our planning department. And also, uh, to continued use with our building safety department and also with our administration department with, uh, building, uh. I'm sorry, with business licenses. So, uh, the plan, and I have Kayla here and Lorraine here if we have any questions. And I also have a representative from BSNA, I believe, on the line. Uh, yeah, he's still there. Uh, if we have anything, Clinton's here with us also. So, um. The city's been using BSNA for well over twenty years. Rob, Rob is here and he uses it in his department right now. Uh, with this upgrade, it's going to interlink, you know, planning him and then also, uh, the addition of the business license, uh, portal in there, too. So there is a quote in there that, that I, that I, that Lorraine provided to us. Looks like initial cost, uh, setup and everything will be about around sixty eight thousand dollars total. And then there'll be a yearly fee, which will be split up between planning, building, uh, safety and then also us. And, uh, you know, all the feedback, and I've worked with BSNA on, on Rob's side, you know, started, you know, because I used to. You know, deal with all the inspections and things, uh, helping out and, uh, it worked real well and. Uh, I will say Kayla and, and Lorraine and, and the rest of the planning staff, uh, looked at like six different companies. And, uh, they feel very comfortable with this prop, with this. So, uh, Clinton, do you want to add anything? Did I miss anything on this?
Uh, I think you pretty much summed it up. The other part I would add is that this is modernizing the software also to current standards, uh, which is cloud based. Um, so that, uh, that's definitely a, a bonus there as far as Costco and unneeded infrastructure on the city's end.
We're excited to get this going. I'm finally glad to, you know, get planning some help there with this, so.
I just wanted to ask about clarification, just understand better. We had issues with the last company. So this is who we used before that. They didn't have everything at that time that we would be able to utilize. Now I moved away from the other company. We're going back to this company because this company offers the things that we need. And this will be a long, more of a long-term solution. To, um. So I just want to make sure that clarification on the record, that that's why. We're kind of moving because we've already been here before with this company. So I just wanted to get that clarification.
Yeah, Kayla and I are planner. Um, so we moved away from BSA originally because it is app-based and having to VPN all of the departments. It was a very slow VPN. If you were not connected to the city wifi, you could not get in to do anything. So inspections were pretty impossible. Um, and it wasn't very user friendly. Since we moved away from BSA, they've gone online. So now you can log in web-based to log in. Um, they've modernized their searches and things like that, and they've fixed some of the issues we had, like being able to rename permits. They couldn't do that before. They can do that now. Um, and having moved away from the software. Um, we've realized that it's very, very beneficial to be on the same software as the streamline. Yeah, so that we can see each other's permits. Um, and also having business license, license come with us will help streamline the process for Nicola and then. Communicates better because we have permits that correspond with business licenses.
I just want to make sure I understood that correctly, so.
Any more questions?
All right, city of Centerton, resolution number two thousand twenty five dash two eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute on behalf of the city of Centerton. An agreement with BSNA Software in Bath, Michigan for software program. For use by the building safety, planning and administration departments for the city of Centerton, Arkansas.
Someone like big motion to adopt resolution twenty five, twenty twenty five dash twenty eight.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Wendy. Roll call, sir.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
Thank you, Clinton.
Thank you all.
All right, our last resolution, resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine. Uh, this is additional, uh, right of way needed, uh, for this gas line removal over by our community center. The map is also attached here that they need an additional, uh. Right of way to move this gas line for, uh, in that area. Anthony did look at it and he, he, uh, supports it a hundred percent and, uh, had no issues with it, so.
So. Email that I saw or if it's on here, but they said that was a new pole. Is that what I read or?
Pole?
I read, this is the power pole. They had to go around the.
Yeah, there was a, yeah, there was a pole or something that had to go around. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I wasn't thinking it was new. And I'm just like.
Yeah, no, they said they had to get it around Carol Electric or something. Yeah.
Well, it's just a pole. It was like.
Yeah.
It's their pole.
I know, but they dug a big old. I mean, big old line all the way up to it. Seems like you could have, you know, foresaw that there's a pole there. Seems like excellent planning.
Good point.
You're suggesting that two utilities could be working together?
I think they ought to work together. I think.
They're trying to work in good old Greathouse Road.
It says, there's a pole right there. Maybe I'd have moved five foot to the left. That's kind of what I'm saying. Now we gotta give them more right of way, which I'm more than willing to do.
Any more questions?
Not a question. It's just.
Oh, no, no, it's fine.
All right, resolution number two thousand twenty five dash two nine, a resolution authorizing grant, I mean, right of way. To Black Hills Energy, Arkansas Incorporated on a parcel of land owned by the city for the purpose of installing a gas line to service this property and others.
Someone like make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second?
Okay.
I heard a Cody and a Wendy, so whichever one you want.
Ladies first.
All right, ladies first.
My name's all over tonight.
Roll call.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Wendy Henson. Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
This seems cantankerous, but is there a way that like, could I abstain from this and just decide? I just. I don't know. Ever since I looked at this, I'm just like, seriously, we have to give. I'm good with giving the right of way because we have to, but it just seems like somebody could have looked at a ditch. And seen a power pole and moved it. And now we gotta do all this because somebody didn't look at a power pole. And they drove, they dug a straight line ditch to a power pole. Drove by it tonight, just to confirm that that's what I've been seeing. So.
It puts you down as an abstention.
We've got four, right?
I do. Cody Miles.
Yes.
Still have four. Okay, good. All right, so this next, this next thing, this is not a discussion item. This was just an informational deal. Uh, we get our water from the Benton, Washington Regional Public Water Authority. It talks about some of their planning, some of their rates for the future. I know that. Some, uh, have, it's come to water meetings, you know, so this was provided to me. I wanted to give it to the whole council. This, this is a reference. For you to have something, you know, so when the water rate goes up, you know, from the provider, you can see what they're doing, you know, with, with the funds, so. This is just more of an informational thing and not, not, not really that. I gotta acknowledge receipt of it. I don't know if I really need to acknowledge receipt of it though, do I? I mean.
I think that's fine.
It's not mandatory. I just wanted them to have it.
It's, uh, I mean, are we going to discuss it at all or just give it to us?
I don't really know what there is to discuss. This is just, you know.
Well, I mean, they're trying to give us rate comparisons to Austin, Texas. And trying to act like their rates are really good considering they're a little bit cheaper than Austin, Texas.
Uh, we always use Austin when we want to use Austin, say we're the next one. This time we don't.
They were the next one. Yeah, Arkansas, Arkansas, the next Austin.
We're gonna, in, looking at these figures.
They're required by law right to, to have this study done.
This is, I mean, this is crazy. In five years, it looks like we're going to be paying ten bucks or more. For water. Based on current water rates with our utility. Think people are upset right now. I, I mean, I guess I'm in a cantankerous mood. I'm not trying to be. I just, so I saw this and thought.
I don't know about you, but I don't even know what that word means, but I'm falling. That's a big word. That's a big word. All right, we're a cantankerous strategery, like whatever.
We got a legislator here, though. He's going to help us with water.
Yeah, well.
They're gonna pass like. Bring it down, so.
Nick Burke's a lot smarter than, than, than I. So, yeah, he would know what that means.
You can twitch when we hear water.
Yeah, no, water and sewer. You go, what do you?
You are more than water.
I hear sewer, too. All right, so. Next. This next thing here is just surplessing some vehicles. We got a used car lot over here? No, they're, it's over here because of the remodel. They usually all park over there. But, uh, we do have three, uh, vehicles that we like to surplus. Two of them, two of them because of mileage and another one just because it needs a, a major engine overhaul. And with the mileage, always not cost effective for us to do it. So there's two thousand twelve Dodge Ram truck. Uh, twenty sixteen Dodge Charger, twenty nineteen Dodge Charger. And what we do with these vehicles, because people say, what are you doing, Bill? So there's a website out there called GovDeals. And I, I place all our surplus on GovDeals and we actually do pretty good. Uh, we, we get a real good return on that. So any citizen, and I actually put the link on, on our social media pages too, after I post these. So if any, and we've had some vehicles sold to local citizens here. Some of our old cop cars are still running around here, so an animal, old animal control truck. So, uh, anyway, uh, we just need permission to surplus these. That's the ask.
You sell them? You take the lights off or can we just drive around later?
Uh, they're, they're, that's a good, it is a valid question. We strip them off. We might leave the, there's a Jado desk in there, which is replace the center console. Might leave that in there, but all the, all the emergency lights, sirens, radios, all that stuff comes out.
That's good.
Yeah. But now they have like running boards and things on them or, or even those fancy bumpers. You know, you see something with the pushbars. We don't take. We can't use them for anything else, so. But that is good, that is a good question, though. All right. Any questions? I'd like my motion to surplus these three vehicles as.
I will include the bin numbers.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Oh, too late.
All right.
Wendy's quick.
He's quick. I'm Justin tonight.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Am I opposed? All right, you have any other business?
Oh, Josh, what was that word again?
Cantanker.
Cantanker. I knew Josh.
Is that like a K or a C or an R?
That's Justin A here, so I guess I gotta speak.
Well, I'll add that, uh, and Bill, when, was it last week or two weeks ago, perhaps? I, I can't, oh, we, uh. Uh, we had a trial, you know, uh, Mr., is it Thacker? I call it Thacker. I don't know what his, how to pronounce it.
I, I think it's something similar to that, yes.
It would de- declaring, uh, um, the territorial jurisdiction. Unconstitutional. Well, we had, I don't know, but we tried for about an hour or so in the, in the court. Uh, agreed with us, uh, that everything that we had done was, was constitutional. I did see just in, in Bill doesn't know this yet, the, uh, the order dismissing the case is, is on the judge's desk now. Austin didn't, the council signed it, so I anticipated being entered tomorrow.
This, this is for the solicitation?
No, this is no, this was for, um, the interesting thing about this is. This law is good until, uh, August fourth, but, uh, Arkansas statute basically said. That the planning commission has, in addition to the, the, within the limits of the municipality. Their territorial jurisdiction goes out, uh, about a mile outside.
Okay.
Well, yes, the plaintiff filed suit indicating that because he lives in the county, he does not, uh, get to vote for the mayor. Or for the city council members who ultimately appoint the planning commissioners. And because he didn't have a right of representation, it, it's unconstitutional.
Potentially would rule over his, his property.
Right. The court agreed with us that the statute is constitutional. However, it's, it's arguably moot. Because the law changes August fourth to where we do not have territorial jurisdiction in law. But it was, uh, I just spent a lot of money on the documents.
He sued us about a year ago. That, that was about a year ago. He didn't just wake up and do it. It's been gone.
Yeah, it took quite some, yeah.
I also wanna say though, cause. Uh, this is, yeah, me and Jeff Safar went, uh, we got, I got commanded to go. That's what it thinks like, you were commanded. So I showed up because it said I had to be there, but, uh, I did an excellent job. Uh, I think, uh, he did a very good job with, with the case and, uh. That's the first time I really actually seen him try AK, you know, cause most of the stuff is, we never get to court, but he, he did. I didn't think, I don't think you were mean enough. I don't think you were mean enough, but that's, that's me. All right, any other business?
Yeah, I've got some. Um, I wanna say, I don't know how exactly we can go about this. I would like us to. Reevaluate the, uh, minimum pay for a mayor in our city. I'd like for us to see what, um, municipalities of our size and maybe even where we're. Going to be in ten years. Uh, I would like to see what that would be. And for us as a council to discuss adjusting that up. And having that minimum pay up as well on our radar. Along with that, I would like to. For us as a council, look at adjusting our current mayor and his current pay, uh, up. Based on the same criteria. So how do we go about that?
Now, can I chime in? Cause I was actually been thinking about this, cause I've been asked to bring it up. So right.
I didn't ask.
No, no, she didn't ask.
You did this.
I know, I, I just, yeah, it's just like, it was not really formally. This is a casual conversation.
Yeah, we did.
So I've been thinking about that. I mean, I, I don't care about my pay. I mean, I'm. I mean, if y'all wanna bring it up, it's fine. I'm, I'm satisfied. But, uh. But my thoughts are, cause the city council can set the mayor's pay. And right now we haven't set it in ordinance, which, you know, I, I've been thinking we need to probably change it too. Uh, because next year's election year, there's gonna be people running for, and that's okay. They, they need to know what they're gonna make, you know, if, if they want the job. Uh, or if I wanna continue, whatever, that's not a discussion for this. But, uh, right now, cause I, and what prompted that is when I came in office, they cut my pay. And they cut it two thousand dollars, uh, based because the other mayor, uh, was, had more experience than I had. Wasn't much, but I mean, I, it didn't bother me one bit. So anyway, we generated an ordinance saying. The new mayor shall, it says shall, have a salary of the first year of sixty five thousand. Well, I think about that though, it is probably low with today's time. You know, maybe back when we did it, it was probably okay. It was, we probably put that in there ten, twelve, fourteen years ago. And sixty five thousand was great. Here's my thinking. And if we wanna do this, great. If not, since we're discussing. I think we need to change it. We need to change it for, for the clerk too, the, the way it's worth it. So I think we need to change to say, uh, starting salary for a newly elected mayor, that's, that's how it's worth it. Shall be a minimum of a certain dollar amount. I'm, I'm thinking in my mind eighty thousand is probably a good start. Cause if you get somebody comes in, you know, whenever, uh, you know, whenever the election's over. They've been a mayor somewhere else. They serve on another board of commission. They might be a department head. You know, we might have department heads. No, seriously, you might wanna step up. You know, someone might take a pay cut. I think if a department head could, but that would be a discussion, you know, but I think just a minimum. You know, moving that up, and I think eighty's a fair number. I don't know. I'm, I'm just throwing it out there. Uh, as far as my salary, I, I did look at some other salaries. I know like the mayor over there, she gets about a hundred thirty seven thousand. Bigger budget though. I'm not, I'm not saying that's, that's a bad thing. Mayor Lowell though, cause I've been asked to look for some, you know, Cody's asked me to look some salaries mid-year, so I'm starting to gather that information. The mayor Lowell makes a hundred nine thousand. And I, and he's only served, he's on his second term, you know, so he's like seventy, I don't mean to keep pointing, but he's, he's seven years into it, so.
I'd like to know what they're, like what the budgets are, cause I mean, I think at the end of the day, we also have to be. Obviously good stewards there too, but I, I think we had this conversation around the last election too, but. Um, I mean, if you're fine with yours, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but let's talk and, and figure out what does it look like in the past? And what is it from a budget perspective versus the surrounding areas?
Yeah.
I mean, don't get me started on the Rogers aspect, like Mayor Heinz, let's keep him out of it. That's a complete, yeah, anyway. But I think it is a conversation to look into.
I, but in that defense too, they do a much larger budget, Bentonville does, even Lowell has a bigger budget.
One hundred percent, yeah.
I, I think we're, but anyway, I, the minimum, I mean, what do y'all think about that? Does it sound reasonable, not reasonable, uh?
You review it and come back.
Yeah.
I don't mean necessarily you, Bill, just.
Review it. Actually, it'll be, there'll be a salary study come out from the municipal league pretty soon. Might be actually be by the time we go to the meeting and then all those will be in there.
I, I don't wanna review all of Arkansas because. Yeah. Other parts of the state.
Consider that Centertown is one of the fastest growing cities in the state.
I don't even think.
As you stated, this is a full-time job, Bill, plus some, right? It's not just eight hours a day. This is a full-time job and someone will likely be sacrificing, like you said, from another place, so.
Just don't look at gold Arkansas.
I don't think we need to s- just stay within our box of Northwest Arkansas either. I think, you know, we can, we can look at Austin since we're comparing ourselves to Austin.
That's probably.
Then all you gotta do is per capita, bring it down, okay? And then you can look at that, you can look at these other places though, and I, I think that. I'm for, for Bill enjoying where he's at and. I think that the work the mayor puts in, uh, that there could definitely be more to that. I, I, I personally feel like the starting minimum should be higher than eighty.
I think it should be. I mean, this, this was discussing.
I personally think we're looking at a minimum of a hundred. If we wanna bring in quality people to lead our city.
You wanna attract, you wanna attract people into the position.
Yeah, if we, if we want quality people to lead this city, I believe we need to have a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars. You think about anybody who leads, uh, large companies that are in business, they're, they're. They may wanna do this and they're bright, great minds out there. Uh, and yet it makes it very hard in Northwest Arkansas for that person. The sacrifice, you may think, you know, eighty thousand, what is if you're making a hundred fifty or two hundred thousand at the job you're currently at? And people would be willing to take a pay cut. They still need to pay for their. Kids to do what they gotta do, their, their mortgage and.
Josh, we had this conversation last election. I mean, it was, you're, you're going on the right track. I think unfortunately not, well, I say in the last election, we had. A lot of candidates, but there was a lot of conversation around one or two that. If you wanna serve the city, you don't need a salary that's aggressive and I, I disagree, but I. I think it's something to look into one hundred percent. It's, it's gotta be, if you want quality, you gotta, you can't get a, a Dillard's, uh, I don't know why I use Dillard's. You can't get an academy or Dick's product for a Walmart price at all times, so. Like you want quality over quantity for sure. I totally agree with you though. We said this the last election.
So how do we go about? When?
Or change it. I mean, it'd just be an ordinance change.
And how do we go about looking into it?
We're making sure that it's competitive, right?
Yeah, competitive.
I think municipally study come.
Comes real soon, probably. It'll be next month or two. And they, they list.
Be a good start.
The, the cities who participate, they list. They don't list every, you know, but the ones that ain't in there, we can, I can always just make a phone call.
I think that's a good start. That's a good starting point. The salary study.
Just bring up one thing, this is a potential suggestion. I don't wanna get too involved, but. If, if you were to set a standard salary this year. Um, because you obviously don't know who's gonna get elected, right? Or I say this year, for the next election or whatever, just a standard salary. And then based on what the voting turnout is, you can make an adjustment to that salary based on the person. And what they bring to the table, that would increase it versus a straight line a hundred thousand for everybody, you know?
That's why you put minimum in there.
I think you put a minimum.
Right now, right, right now, if the election was held tomorrow. Okay, I'd say, you know. Uh, mayor gets elected, brand new mayor, sixty five thousand, no, no wiggle. You put at least a minimum in, you have something.
You're not gonna give somebody run for office if they don't have an idea.
Another.
Oh, you're leaving.
Do some more is for ten kids.
Where do we, where do we go?
Thirteen twenty five Main Street. Oh, do you want me to look at this, get a, get the salaries of the mayor's other state and this and bring that back? Or what, I mean, what, what direction are you giving me?
Yes, whether cities handle it and, and with the increase and.
Subsidies, subsidies don't, it's like the way our ordinance is written is you get reviewed, just like we review our employees. They review the salary of the mayor every year by ordinance.
I think if we're.
Yeah, whatever. If you get a new mayor and you start him at a minimum of X. And they're doing a great job, then, you know, you move them up. If they're not doing a great job, you leave them where they're at. I mean, that's a council decision, not. They knock, knock the walls down and do great.
Yeah.
Yeah, then, then you reward them, you know?
I'm happy to understand why you wouldn't agree. I'm just, I was just throwing that out there, you seem, you don't like that idea, so. I, I wanna hear from people what they think, cause ultimately it's the people that elect the person, so. And the community has right to voice their concerns too. I just thought that might be an option to consider.
Someone disagreed.
You get that a hundred thousand, you're gonna have those twelve people.
I disagreed with assessing someone's qualities based on what the council might think if they're, or after they're elected.
Oh, I got you.
I think that's what I think. I think you, you set a salary based on the role.
And the people elect that. The people elected that person.
Correct.
Thought they've elected.
And my, this conversation that Shannon and I had.
And that was opinion, I think it should be set at maybe eighty. And then like you said, if they come in and they like.
No experience.
Yes, maybe fantastic, bump them up. Do you want people to come in because they wanna serve the community? You don't want them to come in because they're like, oh man, I can make a hundred grand. Because some people like that aren't gonna be serving the community. They're gonna be serving them, serving themselves.
And I think that.
I think setting it at eighty, and if they come in and they do a fantastic job and you guys wanna bump them up to a hundred, do that.
And the, and the mechanism, it's yearly anyway. You, you look at it every December by ordinance. And, and you look at the clerk the same way, so.
But I also think. Other mayor's salaries and everybody, yes.
I think you start with the A M L study, you look at it, cause there's a lot of research that goes into that and that'll give you a pretty good base.
I get, and I'll get that to you guys when we get it.
We're just kind of, I mean. He reaches one of the top growing, um, cities in the state. They're much smaller. If you think about how fast they're growing, well, whoever takes that office is gonna have to, to really ramp up. Versus, no offense, who's been here for many years. When our population was a lot smaller, so you're, you're taking on a lot more. Um, so I, I just think it's appropriate to look at all different aspects and, and get different feedback.
You can't decrease it.
The job performance of what that person's gonna do, but what the job entitles, the job description. And what you're gonna base salary on, just like we do ours or anybody else's. But once you said it, they're there for the term. They're there for that term until the election comes back up again. So.
Each year.
Kind of to her point.
Every year.
Every.
Someone gets elected and.
Mayor salary for our current ordinance is reviewed each year.
Yes.
Can't go backwards.
So if you get a bad one and you jump a hundred thousand.
I mean, I'm, first off, I'm not planning to run for mayor, so I want that out there. I know I've talked about it in the past. I am not planning to run for mayor, so this is, has no selfish indulgences going on. I, if we look at the economy of Northwest Arkansas and we want a quality person, candidate. Running for mayor or current mayor staying in office, we need to be willing to pay them. I mean, if, if we get a self-serving person, they can be, they can be a slick, slick talker and that might win people over. My thought is, is let's, let's have confidence in the people to actually see through that. Uh, and let's pay that person to actually lead our, cause we don't wanna, we don't want our city to, to. We want our city to go into the future and have a, a great future. And I want a person in this office that, I'm not saying this has nothing to, I'll bring it up because I wanna, I want to treat him well. That's why I'm, I wanna look at his salary after we're said and done, to look at adjusting it as well. Uh, because I want, I, I want this city to, to go into the future with people that actually. Have what we need to do it. I'm not saying people wouldn't. I just. I know there are people that would say no to the position because it's just too much of a sacrifice for the economy in Northwest Arkansas.
Even at a hundred thousand, it would be a pay cut for some.
For most, for a lot of people.
Few people are running.
Absolutely it would. That's, that's, that's why I, I just think about if you go lower, we're, we're cutting people out that wouldn't. Uh, that's, but I, I think, I think we need to do a study regardless and then we can further discuss.
I'll get that information to you soon. The salary studies come out. Yeah, they'll, they'll be putting those out soon. The, the last one's already in the drop. You can look at them online, the old, last year's. New one's coming out for twenty twenty five. All right, any other business?
Yeah, we need to revisit, uh, ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash two seven. Lorraine let me know that, uh, in addition to our, I guess. Uh, the amount on the typo, but apparently, uh, they, they pulled the bonds and there's a new bond company covering it, so I, I, I think we just.
Seven or ordinance twenty seven.
Ordinance two thousand twenty five.
Okay, I thought you said resolution. Sorry. So, uh, I'll let Lorraine talk.
Well, or just let me know that the bonds, they need to be pulled by the contractor. So it will be S and K dirt works and then whoever their surety company is. So we'll make that amendment tomorrow if that's acceptable along with the amount.
So you still wanna pass it with your amendment?
Correct, so, so that we're passing the, the.
So I need to, we need to make another motion in on that.
I would.
No, no, I just wanna make sure we're doing it. All right, so based on what Lorraine said, would somebody make a motion to approve amended? Twenty five dash twenty seven with the changes she stated. Motion. Okay, we got a second?
Second.
Second by Cody Miles. New roll call, sir.
Let's see, I heard it. Justin Cowler.
Already checked out.
See.
You there, Justin?
Uh, no, he checked out.
He could be close.
He checked out.
It could be close when we pass this. Wendy Henson? Nancy Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes, no, yes. Oh, you got, you got four without me. Okay.
Cody Miles?
Yes.
Gibson?
All right, all right. So Josh, what I'll do, I'll, I'll get to work on getting those salaries for you. Actually, I, I wanna share the salary study with the council for every, all positions, not just that one. You know, we were asked to look at it and we can probably look at it at the next budget time when we're, when that's coming down the road here, not too terribly far away. So, uh. That's good, um. So I'll do that. I just wanna make sure I have my direction correct. Any other business?
Yeah, I'd like, I would like to readdress ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty six. Well, because I don't want it to appear as a conflict of interest, because I did receive a three years car wash from them, so I don't know if we can do a revote on that.
You got a free year car.
I did.
Honestly, that was my pump.
I did.
I need to go by there and tell them I'm.
Thought about it. We're sitting here, I didn't even think about it earlier, but I'm just like, you know what?
Oh, right. I'd have to.
We could do a.
I just didn't agree with the, and I, and I, I will just say.
So I had to revoke the passive too, you said. You still got Cody Miles and then you, if you.
I wouldn't have, yes, but I.
Well.
So I called.
Well, I just feel like I, I got, I got a free car wash, kind of through the mayor. And because that's the business that, that, you know, that we're voting on here, I think it would be best just for me to abstain from it.
Can I just speak to the fact that for transparency purposes, which I know that's kind of a, a word that's kind of taboo some, sometimes, but. The concern was is that on the Facebook post, they asked for nominations. Your name was not nominated. But it was shown when, when they, it was that you were given the gift. But there was no public nomination for you on the thing. There was for him.
Right, right.
There was, he had made a comment on there and then, um.
So I, I can address that. So they did notify me, tell me I won. Okay, which, which is fine. Uh, however, I. And I said this when I presented the award, it's. and I said this when I presented the award, it, none of this is about me. You know, it's about the the community and, you know, Josie put a lot of time working on these chamber thing that she was doing and uh plus a lot of time on the council and I I just asked to nominate her in my place, so. That was it. So I I don't, I don't want to see a conflict or any of it, but if y'all want to vote that way, that's fine. I mean, I'm
It's about a five hundred and fifty dollar value.
For what?
It's a one-year car wash plus a fifty dollar gift card. But here's the, here's, here's the, it's the optics of it, in my opinion. So you've got, and and my nonprofit, I would recuse myself if I had been nominated, but my nonprofit was nominated. Another nonprofit was nominated. Her name was not listed online, and that was one of the concerns was that it wasn't listed that she was nominated, but she won it. And so that, then we have a vote on a utility easement that's happening tonight on the same company. Just doesn't like
And as we're
I watched the Ethics Commission about it yesterday, and I was gonna wait to see how their vote came before I voted. But I just didn't feel comfortable knowing that information and not knowing truly if there was a conflict in the statute.
Probably the better option would have been to just decline the gift.
That's what I would have expected to happen.
Right.
Because she's also, she's city council member. You do serve on the board of the chamber. That doesn't reflect this, but just the optics of transparency for the community, I just feel like that it should not have been received. And it should have been more plainly communicated online if that was the intent, because it says nominate someone and why. Now, you had made a comment, I know a guy, and then removed it. But, you know, it, they mentioned that there was a tie, but there was no tie because there was no there was no nomination for her. It was done outside of that Facebook post.
Right, I just want to ask a question regarding what we voted on, not all of those stuff.
Right.
Would you actually stop uh uh asking a question? Would you just clarify and elaborate or make confirm what exactly we voted on?
You are voting on, let's bear with me, this is twenty-six?
Yes.
On accepting a right of way.
That means?
It it basically means, you know, so they've got an area that they are essentially donating to the city so that we can put utilities in it.
Okay, so they gain nothing, they lose.
Right.
Land, right. Okay, so they're, that's, and that's kind of what I was thinking in my head. They are not gaining anything by us voting yes. Matter of fact, they're donating it to the city so the city can get
I understand, but because their name came up and then there was this situation, I just felt safer to just recuse myself because of that potential and drastic
You didn't accept a gift, right?
You didn't accept anything.
Okay.
Knowing that there's a potential conflict was made me concerned about voting on that particular thing. So I'm still learning.
I guess I'm confused. If you didn't receive a gift, how you would feel conflicted.
Because I didn't know if the law, if if she had voted also for that.
Well, one of the things I I I want to make clear, and I'm 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 kind of going through this as well. I I think it creates more of a problem of, let's see how everybody votes, then I'll decide whether or not I'm conflicted out or not, because in essence, that's a vote.
Conflict wasn't mine. It was more of just understanding that there was a potential conflict that I was aware of, and I didn't know realities of whether that was truly a conflict or not, so that's why I didn't feel comfortable voting.
And I'm not sure I'm following you.
Well, and it's a utility easement, but it just so happened to be the same company, so I just, I was just, I was gonna ask the question. Um because I just want to make sure that
You gain nothing. So so how would you feel kind?
I'm saying the conflict potentially, and that's why I called the Ethics Commission. And she said, you know, you have a choice. You can choose to say something ahead of time or just
Right, but my my question is, what 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 did you feel gave rise to a potential conflict with your vote?
I wish, I just wasn't sure because I knew, you know, that the there was a potential conflict with that that business. So I was still, you know, and I'm still new to this, so I'm just trying to protect, protect myself essentially.
So Brian, can I, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, because I'm I'm
And you can tell me if I'm overstepping or something, it's not correct. So first off, kudos for being cautious. Better to be cautious than
Essentially what I was trying to do.
Much, much better to be cautious than, and when it comes to this stuff, then come back and
You weren't here to ask, so.
Uh, I I believe with you, there would not be a conflict because you took nothing. That's what Brian's saying.
I didn't, and I I just recused myself from the vote, which I feel is my my right to do as a council member.
You have right, just like I
Have that right to do that.
You 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 have a right, that absolutely.
I feel that there may be a reason why I should or shouldn't vote for something if I'm unclear.
But typically, you would recuse if you have a conflict. You know, tip, you know, the the other thing is understand the citizens have voted for you to make votes.
Right.
Which I understand, I understand now.
Yes, sir. No, that's, I mean, it's it's a, in 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 the other side of this, the reason why I was asked you to clarify is that the city of Centerton has everything to gain by us accepting this. Uh not, and and they have, they're gonna lose property.
I mean, arguably, they're they're gaining utilities potentially through it, so, but I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's
They're gaining utilities.
The gray area that I wasn't sure about, that's that's the bottom line.
Certainly, I mean, the 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 issue is, I I think arguably with regards to receiving it and and this being on the agenda, it certainly, while I don't know that if it creates an appear, a a conflict of interest, it may create the appearance.
That's, and that was the big
Clarity, but 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 that's it will, you and I'll talk, because I'm I'm struggling with
Well, I just, yeah, I just want to create clarity and just ask if we do a revote. I mean, is that something that we can do?
Yeah, we do revoke, right?
If we can just do a revote.
Now that you've clarified, I I can, I can
Cody Miles still here though? Cody, you still up there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because you might need me to break a third third vote, so. All right, so you want to go ahead and uh let's go and do a revote. Somebody like to make a well, we're invading, yeah, so maybe you should do adopt ordinance twenty, or ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six.
Make a motion.
Have a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Okay, do a roll call, sir.
Wendy Henson. Josie Reed.
Abstaining.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
You got three. She voted, yeah, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, sure. All right, uh any other business? So I got a couple of things just before we adjourn. First of all, coffee with the mayor is next Saturday, the twenty-first. Newly remodeled meeting room, please come, come see us. Have a good time, have some good coffee from one of the local businesses. Also, I I posted online, but uh we have a Senator branding meeting with the University of Central Arkansas on the twenty-sixth of June, which is a Thursday, next Thursday, not next Thursday, Thursday after. Yeah, and uh, lucky to come, it's from five thirty to seven thirty. Everybody in the public's welcome to. Uh if you want to come to provide dinner, there's a, there's a QR code I posted online, but you also get on our website too. You know, just make sure you RSVP so we feed you, you know, I don't, I don't want you to, I want to make sure everybody does that here with a full belt, so. And then also, uh it was announced, I don't know if y'all got the email yet, but there won't be no planning meeting next Tuesday. So uh with that, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
What are we calling the?
Rebranding.
Thank you.
Yeah, rebranding.
Rebranding. Twenty-six.
Yeah. Okay. Make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion, we got a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call.